All right, gentlemen.
Turn that off.
Let's get going. All right. Welcome to the May 3 regular meeting of your Board of Commissioners. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. And tonight we'll have invocation by Overseer B. Stephen Brown from Noah's Ark Full Gospel Baptist Church. And following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand if you are able, just remain standing after the prayer. And I'll ask Commissioner Perdle if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance following that. So Pastor Brown, if you'd lead us tonight. Stand if able, please.
Thank you, Commissioners, for asking for divine direction through prayer for our citizens of our county. I appreciate you for doing that. Our Father who art in heaven, we thank you today for giving us grace and the time to meet and gather on the matters of this county. And Lord, today I ask you that you impart wisdom for these who have been commissioned to lead this county. I pray that you will entrust them, the Commissioners, with the wherewithal to remember the welfare of his citizens and his businesses. And we thank you for the gifts and the talents that is in this Commission that they use for the welfare and security of the communities that they have been chosen to serve. I thank you, Lord, for giving them the grace and the manner in which to lead us as citizens of this great county. And finally, Lord, I ask that you would watch over their families and bless this community of people of all races and creeds. I thank you for the peace that lies within. And now, in our Father's name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend.
Place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We did. If you would, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Reverend. Thank you, Commissioner Perdle. Well, as you know, we work from an agenda that's been published for about a week. And so we have that before us. Do we have a motion to approve? Or are there any amendments?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Travis. Is there a second?
There is.
Thank you. All in favor of the approval of the agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good, thank you. We have an approved agenda. And we also have a consent agenda, which is our next item. Items on the consent agenda are non-controversial items. However, if anyone has any questions about the items, please contact Lance Metzler, our county manager. He'll be glad to fill you in on the details of any item if you have a question. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
So moved.
Very good, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. We have an approved consent agenda. Our next item is public comment. And we have no one signed up for public comment. So with that, we'll move on to item seven, public hearing. Lee Cockram, our Director of Economic Development. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Look, I guess I'll take that off. Thank you for having me. Okay. So tonight's public hearing is to amend and restate the original performance agreement that we signed with Farmina Pet Foods USA back in December of 2020. And this is to just reflect a change in the location for the option on what would potentially be Phase Two. The remainder of the agreement will stay unchanged.
Very good, thank you.
Need a motion of approval, Mr. Chair?
We need to have a public hearing, and we'll open that and close it since, basically, we have no one signed up to speak on the public hearing.
But we'll declare it open anyway. So if anyone does wish to speak, I'll open the floor now. Nothing seen? With that, we'll declare the public hearing closed. And now, we'll be glad to accept motions.
So approved.
And a second? Is that from Commissioner Travis? Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If you want to recognize Lee in being a superstar.
Yes, Lee made it on the cover of Business NC this month, so we're very proud to have you shine so brightly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. It takes us to item number eight. Ms. Galloway, our Director of Financial Services.
Y'all can make mine as easy as Lee's, right?
Yes, ma'am. Maybe.
Maybe. I've got a budget amendment I need for you to consider approving to increase our health insurance fund expenditures, $2.3 million, which is going to require us to use about $2 million of the fund balance in that fund. Right now, we have a fund balance of about $3.3 million in there, but our health insurance claims are extremely high this year. This is really an odd year for us. We've not seen claims as high before. I know since Lance and I have been here, we've not seen claims as high. They're running about 25% to 30% higher than they were last year at this time. We are looking at those. We've been working and meeting frequently with the brokers, trying to understand these claims, where they're coming from. You know, can we project them going forward? Or do they drop off? So we're still looking at all that. We'll have more information on this when we come to budget meetings for next year as we're developing that budget. Some of these claims have reached the stop-loss level, so we are getting some revenues back now from the stop-loss policy. I project to get about $800,000 of that this year. So...
Health insurance.
We're still digesting all the nuances that are going on with the claims. And we'll have more for that when we talk about budgets and try and develop that for next year.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Let's see if we have any questions from the Commissioners.
You go, I'll follow you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Perdle.
Well, I'll go, and you can follow me.
I'll let you go first.
Thank you, Pat. Obviously, this is a result of essentially an unknown in our health care. We can't predict how people need this service. However, some of the things that are, some of the constants in this account, are we still looking at such as administrative costs? That is a fixed cost? Are we still looking at trying to save some money on the fixed end of these accounts? I hope going into this next budget year, I think it's a conversation that we've had before during our budget talks. I know that I brought it up a couple of times because, you know, just because you have a really good year one year, it can hit you the next.
This was a bad year. We had about 15 of those covered that has caused the main part of it to increase. So hopefully, it's not going to be as bad next year. But we're budgeting for the worst and hoping for the best.
Well, you look at how many people is on the plan. You know, just because it may be 20 next year, but a different 20. You know, that's the thing about the insurance way we have it. And it's not unique, the way we have it. I'm just saying it's healthcare in general. I just reiterate the fixed costs in our plan. Let's just see if there's any, like, I think I talked to you before about cost sharing and what's available. Not saying, just what's available.
Well, I'll share that, you know, that the fixed costs of this plan are very nominal compared to the whole budget. Really what is driving it this year are the claims. But we'll bring all that information and show you what the fixed costs are versus the claims. We can provide all that during budget time. But that's, there could be some savings there, I'm not sure. And we did work with some of our fixed costs coming up, trying to, for the next year's budget, trying to bring those costs down as well. But a lot of it is, well, it's all the claims this year. We typically run five or less high-cost claimants, and we've had up to 15 this year. So there's just a lot of, it's all in claims, really.
And we're doing pretty good on the wellness program?
We've had to shut the wellness program down due to the COVID. I mean, we just haven't been able to get everybody together. Typically, we had activities, and we just haven't had any activities. Now, as far as our wellness facility down the hall with our PA has been going really good.
Yeah, I'm thinking more about procedures and diabetes and colonoscopy, stuff that are required based on your age.
We stopped all the classes because of the COVID. So we'll start that back up.
Okay. Commissioner Berger?
Just want to make sure I understand the number we're dealing with. You mentioned $2.3 million, and here we've got a projected increase of $2.8. So are we looking to move $2.3?
I'm increasing the expenditure budget 2.3. I'm adjusting the other revenue sources based on stop-loss coming in. Some revenues aren't coming in, as interest aren't. The fund balance that I'm tapping into is $2 million. And this is going to cover both the increase in claims costs that we are seeing, the incurred but not reported accrual at year-end is also based on your claims that have been happening as a percentage of that. So that will increase as well.
What was, what did we budget at the beginning of the year? I'm just trying to get an idea of what percentage are we dealing with of an overall budget? Is it the 25% to 30%?
The 25% to 30% of claims, yes, which is about $1.5 million in claims.
Okay.
And the rest of it will be the accrual for, and that's paid claims. That's claims that we anticipate paying between now and June 30th at the end of the year. But also, I have to book a liability for those services that are occurring now, that the claims will not be processed through the insurance carrier until after the year. We have to book those.
But due to the increase, we've underbudgeted close to 30% of what we needed.
Correct.
Right? And we anticipate next year that figure being even higher, perhaps.
Perhaps.
Okay. And that's where the two of y'all will come back and give us some recommendations at budget time as to what to do with the health insurance, right?
We've got to lock something in right now for the health insurance.
Okay.
I mean, we've got a, we're having pre-enrollment win. Is it next week or week after?
I have enrollment, I believe it begins next week.
Okay. All right.
Gentlemen, any further questions? Very good. Do we have a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Takes us to item nine. Felissa Farrell, our Director of Health and Human Services. Thank you for being here tonight.
Gentlemen, thank you for having me. I have a PowerPoint presentation. If you can just give me a second. Okay. So tonight, we are going to be discussing the Cardinal Innovations Healthcare Foster-Child Reinvestment Agreement. This is an MOU that was sent earlier this fiscal year to Lance and I for review. We did do some comments back to Cardinal, and then it was resent back to us. So I'm going to go through some of the high points in the agreement. So the reason why Cardinal has come up with this agreement is that we know that there are significant challenges in meeting the needs of children in the foster care system. A lot of these children have trauma and serious emotional and mental health needs. And these kids in particular have to be referred to higher levels of care. So we were hoping that the comprehensive Medicaid Plan for Foster-Children was going to be rolled out this year when Medicaid transformation happened. However, that has been delayed by the state till July of 2023. So this agreement is going to help us a little bit in getting funding for us to fill in some gaps, and I'll talk a little bit about that. This agreement basically covers per member, per month payment for the number of kids in foster care that we have here in Rockingham County. And what that really looks at is at about $1 million for this current fiscal year and then approximately $800,000 next year. Currently, as of today, we have about 172, 173 kids in foster care. And then we have other children that are in guardianship or in the adoption process, so it's a little over 200. Funds were paid under this agreement, may be only used for foster children. We can't use it in child protective. We can't use it in adult services. It can only go for children who are in foster care. And the funds have to support those children that are in custody to meet, in the first 30 days, any emergency needs. So if the child needs an emergency placement, or if they have to have emergency treatment, that's where we need to kind of guide those funds. So assessments, evaluations, comprehensive clinical assessments, specialty assessments that need to be completed, supplies that children might need, such as clothing, toiletry, hygiene products, foster and kinship parenting training. This is a big concern for us here at the local level. We know that our foster parents need a lot more training than what they're getting with the basic foster care training that is put out by the division that we carry out here locally. Additional supports for kinship parents. A lot of folks, a lot of children that come to our department don't necessarily go into foster care. If we can find a family member that is willing to take that child, then that is a best practice. However, a lot of those folks don't get the training that even foster parents get. So they need a lot more services and supports than what we can provide. We have unmet health-related issues, such as social determinants of health. So housing instability, sometimes food insecurity, transportation. These funds can be used towards some of those things. Once emergency needs are kind of met, then we can look at other ways to use these program funds. We can try to develop a recruiting structure for foster families, which is something that we desperately need to do. COVID-19 did not do us any favors in the past year, has really restricted us in doing our outreach to the community and bringing folks in to be foster families, to be a foster parent. Supporting kinship in adoptive placements. It's a special type of caseload that you do when you do adoptions. You have to not only be working with the foster family if that child is in a foster family, but preparing them to be the adoptive parent. But if a child is not in an adoptive placement, then that adoption worker has to go out there and try to find a family that is willing to adopt that child. So there's a lot of hours that go into that. Trainings for permanency resources and other things that we need to use to support the child in the home environment. Sometimes that might be modifications in the home, especially if you have a special-needs child. Some programs do have funds for that, but a lot of times, we run into brick walls where those funds can't be used for a specific need for that child. So this will be an avenue to take some funds that might help that child or that family adapt to their environment. Identified areas to use funds. So one of the things that we did when we started looking at these programs is I started sitting down with my supervisors and my staff, kind of seeing where the biggest needs were. So kinship care, we kind of talked a little bit about that. So many years ago, prior to, when I came to Social Services, there used to be funding available for kinship. Those funds kind of went away. So one of the things that we would be looking at using these funds, if we are able to sign the MOU, is to maybe give a stipend to those kinship families to help with the support of that child or children. Then, we would be helping them get into MAP training, which MAP training is the program that we train foster families in. That's how they get their certification and become a licensed foster family. Once that happens, then that stipend for kinship would stop, and then they would start getting a monthly stipend for being a foster parent. We would allow about six to eight months to occur so that folks that are working or they have other obligations, we can make sure that we can meet their needs. We would also be providing additional training, particularly around trauma and behavioral health, for those families. We would also be looking at trying to find or help provide childcare assistance if that particular family does not qualify for childcare subsidy. We would also try to help that family with certain types of things that they might need for their home. A lot of times, when we're talking to families that are considering taking a family member or a child that's related to them, sometimes they don't have the money to purchase a bed. Or they may not have money to purchase additional things for their home that that child is going to need. So this would be a way to utilize funds to help that child have a loving home, a safe place, a bed to sleep in. We would also consider using the funds to contract with licensed providers or qualified professionals to be on-call to respond to urgent issues with children. One of the things that we know is a need in our community is a mobile crisis or mobile response. We would like to try to develop that, particularly for children that are here in our community with kinship and foster families, so that they can have an immediate response instead of having to wait for the provider that they may be connected with. A lot of times, if you can just talk to that child, calm them down, it prevents that disruption from happening in that home. And of course, we're going to probably need some additional staff to help provide some of that training that we were talking about earlier. Foster-parent training. We can't get enough training to foster families. That is one of the things that we are asked about all the time, and usually, they're asking for very specific training. So we would use those dollars to implement curriculums and provide that training. We would be preparing children, preparing families who have children that have experienced trauma. We'd be working with them so that they know how to help that child, and then also learning additional strategies to de-escalate a child when they are kind of having a behavioral health moment. Children that remain in the community have a better outcome than children who don't. So by also doing better recruiting efforts, if we can have more licensed foster families here, we can have more children stay here. One of the biggest issues that we have in our agency right now is a lot of our staff are having to travel outside Rockingham County, sometimes hours at a time, to place a child. So if we can be able to recruit more foster families, give them the support they need, and have children stay here, they can stay in their homeschools, they can still see their friends, they can have longer visits with their parents if the court allows. It's just a better process overall. We would also be willing to kind of offer foster families who take a child who may have a few more behavioral health issues, initial stipend, and then also, again, back to that wraparound mental health services to help that child while they're in that placement. High-need areas, we need mental health services. So we want to look at developing a process for having on-call staff respond to our foster children that are in the care and custody of the department. We want to also develop a hiring pool of individuals that, when we don't have a placement for a child, that's a therapeutic placement, either because there's not one available or there's a situation occurring. We would like to have a pool of individuals that can stay with that child instead of our staff having to rotate and sit over at the Rockingham County Sheriff's Department. And I know Sheriff Page is here tonight. I want to say thank you to Sheriff Page and to his staff, who are exceptionally very good to my workers. They check on them when we are sitting with a child, and they help us out a lot. So it's unfortunate at times that we do have to sit with a child over at the Sheriff's Department, but they make it as calm and caring as they can, and we appreciate that. We also are thinking about talking with residential therapeutic providers, folks that we used to use before, but maybe now are not working with us as much, and offering them additional monies to maybe encourage immediate placements instead of having to wait for those placements. We are also looking at non-permanent community support staff. These are folks that are like paraprofessionals. They help a lot with our social workers who have a lot of visits that have to be done, or the foster child has a lot of doctor's appointments. They assist with that process. And then we are also looking at developing more treatment options for domestic violence offender programs, because that is a huge need in our community right now. Enhancing foster care family recruitment. We've already talked a little bit about that. We would use some of those funds to pay our staff to go to churches and to our community events so that we can continue to try to recruit. We could also look at hiring part-time staff if that would be preferred. We would purchase some items to enhance recruitment and hold recruitment events. And we would like to also consider purchasing like a crisis bed or a therapeutic bed to have availability in case we have a child that didn't have a therapeutic placement. So the other thing that we would use these funds for is sort of a holdover of kind of a system change that we're going to be experiencing here in the fall. Beginning in October, the Family First Prevention Services Act goes into effect, and our 4E funding mechanism is going to be changing. And through the budget process this year, we had a significant decrease in that funding off. It was rather quite difficult, actually, to kind of sit down and do a budget, because we really can't predict what's going to happen with foster care. We see that foster care is growing, but we don't know the kind of kids that we're going to be getting into care, and we don't know the circumstances. So what's going to change is that kids that are in congregate care settings are not going to be eligible for reimbursement with 4E funds anymore. So as we look at some of this, we are looking at some of these funds from the MOU to help cover what we may not have coming in that we've been having for the past few years. So using these funds could cover some of the reduction that we're having in the revenues. Challenges. I'm not going to stand here and tell you that there haven't been challenges. Staff are overworked, they're strained, and they spend a considerable amount of time on very complex cases with children who are experiencing behavioral health issues. There is a lack of or very limited resources, and it's difficult to act services most of the time. So we spend a lot more time now than we even did five years ago trying to find resources and services for children in foster care. And it's going to take time with the suggestions that I've given you today of what we can use the funding for, just because we're going to be stretched. We also know that there's going to be additional work with the agency. It's going to put additional administrative processes on us. We're going to have to do a lot of tracking. We're going to have to be doing a lot of reporting of the revenues and expenditures. And, you know, recruitment is difficult. But if you talk to anyone in Health and Human Services right now, whether it's a nurse, a social worker, doctors, police officers, whoever, it is difficult to recruit folks right now in human services overall. And that's just kind of where we are in the day and the life. We've got a lot of things going on in the world. COVID-19 hasn't helped any of those. So even with the challenges, when Lance and I sat down and reviewed the MOU, of course, I made some changes to it. We sent it, and then it came back. Overall, it would be good if we could get the funds and at least try to do some things here locally to improve the care and services for kids that are in the custody of the social services. And I'm open to any questions.
Any questions, gentlemen? Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, a couple here. I'd like to mention first, this is very thorough briefing. I had 411 questions, and you answered most of them as you went along, so very well done. And I think we're blessed to have an informed staff here in our Social Services Department that has great challenges but does really well. How do we stand as compared to other counties in recruiting foster parents?
You know, we've been more successful than some of the counties around us. I've talked to some colleagues that are in different counties, and they've kind of hit a brick wall. The past year, though, we haven't been able to do any recruitment at all. The MAP training in particular, there was very strict guidance given by the state, said you can only do that training in person. Now, they've been able to change that, but that just recently happened. So in the past year, our recruitment efforts have been... So in the past year, our recruitment efforts have been zero because we haven't been able to do it because of the pandemic. I do think that once we get out there, we've got two great licensing workers. I think that they've got a lot of energy, and they have a good idea of what's needed. I think we can really improve that. I've set a goal for them, too. It's a pretty hefty goal by fall. So I told them-
That's good.
Yep. Forty families.
I like goals.
Yes, and I hope they can reach that.
You can't get there unless you set a goal. I ask the question because I've heard advertisements from Forsyth and Guilford and Randolph seeking foster parents.
Can you see our billboard on 220?
I did.
And we also have, yeah.
Well done. What sort of coordination do you do with the schools, nurses, counselors, teachers, admin? It would seem like that that would be a necessary collaboration.
It is. Most of the children that we're talking about today are children that have extreme high needs. So they usually have an IEP or a 504 with the school system. So those social workers are working with those 504 coordinators or that special education or IEP teacher in the schools. The hard part with doing those is when kids are in a residential therapeutic placement. That's where the schooling really falls between the school system and that therapeutic placement. Social worker is involved to make sure that connection happens, but that really has to take place between that residential provider and the school system.
This is kind of a subjective question, but you're getting money that you didn't have before. What's the real case of gangrene, the sore area that this is going to help you fix?
We're already doing the work. Why not get paid for it?
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, great, Commissioner Pertle.
Thank you. Felissa, I see that to date fiscal year 2021, you're getting a million dollars. So I'm sure there's some retroactive expenses that this will help cover.
And we actually have already started doing some of those claims for the children that we've had to sit with 24/7 at the Sheriff's Department. We have already invoiced those to Cardinal Innovations.
I just want to say thank you.
No questions?
Well, let me ask you then, I see we had a million dollars one year, 800,000. Are there provisions to possibly continue this if it works?
You know, that was one of the questions that we asked the CEO of Cardinal, Trey Sutton, when Lance and I had a meeting with him, and there is possibility with that, particularly since we don't really know how Family First Prevention is going to really impact things. We also have a new child welfare practice that's going to be rolling out this summer that I don't have any information about yet that is making me a little nervous. We've got that going on. And then, of course, with the foster care Medicaid track that didn't roll out this year that's going, you know, 2023, I'm hoping that Cardinal will consider those additional funding past the two years. And it seemed like a possibility. The other thing that we talked to him about was prevention. You know, one of the key things is, in our communities, we've got to get out of the mindset of always being reactionary, and we need to do a lot more on the prevention side. What can we do to get services and supports in place to help prevent some of these things versus being reactionary and on the back end of trying to having to address these things?
Well, in your report here, it says it'll take some time to ramp up these programs and get staff in place and trained and such as that. So some of that's going to be ongoing costs. So I just hopefully would think that Cardinal would look at that and consider extending this if we can get it working very well.
I think so. I think that was my impression, Lance.
Yeah, he seemed open to that. I was just going to mention, though, the 4E that she had mentioned earlier, the fine for that, that's a million-dollar loss that we're losing this year, just straight off the cuff. So we've got a lot of backfilling to do with that.
Gentlemen, any more questions? With that, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, is there a second?
Certainly.
All right, we have a motion and a second. The motion is to approve the MOU from Cardinal Innovations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Very good, the motion carries. Thank you. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next on our list is from Ronnie Tate, our Director of Engineering and Public Utilities. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. I have two items for your consideration tonight. And the first item is request for approval of Advance One Development LLC to perform the N-MOC remediation project at the landfill. The total budget for this is $1,225,370. Along with that request is also a request for approval for the county manager to approve change orders to that contract up to $50,000 without board approval, as we've done in the past on construction contracts. And also, finance has submitted a budget amendment for this project as well that will need approval if the board sees fit to. And I can either-
Excuse me, Ms. Tate. You said N-MOC. Can you explain what that stands for?
Sure. What I was going to ask, do you want me to read the brief narrative I've got that sort of defines the project with that? Or I can just tell you what N-MOC stands for?
I just think we need to know what N-MOC is. I think it'll be self-explanatory.
Okay, so N-MOC is non-methane organic compounds, gases inside the landfill that are not methane.
Very good, thank you.
And this is remediation to remove those out of the older landfill cells. We have a, the new cell, one through three, is hooked to our current flare, and it burns those out now, but this is one that goes back to the very first sale we had at the landfill.
Very good, Commissioner.
Why are you having to do this?
Because-
Very brief explanation for the public, basically.
Okay, yeah, so I think in 2016, the EPA changed their new source performance standards, NSPS regulations, to what's called XXX standards. And at the time, those standards were you could have 50 milligrams per year of N-MOC gas. And when that changed, it dropped it to 34 milligrams per year of N-MOC gas. Currently, with all the cells we have, new and old, we're producing 44.7 milligrams per year, so we fell out of compliance once the standards changed.
If we don't do this, what's the penalty?
I would suspect that DEQ would come in and write a notice of violation with a fine probably up to $15,000 per day until it's corrected. Now, whether they would go to that length, I don't know, but those are typically the penalties.
Commissioner Pertle?
What will our new numbers reflect after you complete this project? I'm just wondering, how low do we need to go to avoid the next change by EPA?
As long as we're burning it off, it doesn't really matter. You're just, you're burning off the gas that you've got in excess of the 34 milligrams. Our engineering company estimates in about five years, we're going to be below it anyway or would have been below it. But we couldn't get the-
And I guess my question was, is the threshold going to be lowered anymore, that you can't have more than 17? I have no idea of it.
Well, once this is all hooked up, it will be flaring it all, so it really won't matter. We'll follow in compliance unless there's some other change to that to where we can't burn the gas.
Any other questions?
So, I'll go ahead. Well, it's kind of basic. I assume there's going to be less produced. There's going to be a degradation in the pile that's produced.
Yeah.
44 milligrams is hardly anything. Tell me what that really means. I mean, is that 44 milligrams per 100 of cubic feet of trash or something like that?
That's for all of our cells out there.
44 milligrams for all cells?
When they test it, that's what the results are.
There's got to be some other criteria. I mean, you can put 44 milligrams in your hand.
Well, no, it's nothing. You're exactly right.
Wow. Commissioner Berger?
But I believe I understood-
You can burp and make 44 milligrams. Yeah.
Commissioner Berger?
I believe I understood you to say that within five years, we would meet that requirement anyway?
It, probably yes, because we've got cells, cell one is exempt. If you've been to the landfill, that's where the gate boxes are stored and where the general public comes in. So that one's under the threshold of 1.0, so it's exempt. So this is for cells two, three, four, and five to lower those gas limits. But our engineering group estimate within five to six years that those cells will not be producing gas, any more gas. They're going to actually run out of gas, so.
And so basically, we're having to spend the 1.2 million dollars to speed up the clock.
Pretty much, yes. Yeah.
And has there been any communication with DEQ?
Lots of communication. They, Labella, which is our engineering group, have tried everything they know to fight this, to get us out of it, and there's no getting out of it.
Commissioner Travis?
I'm good.
Okay. Gentlemen, any further questions?
This doesn't look cost-effective to me.
We all agree.
I got to tell you, this just doesn't look cost-effective to me. And 1.2 million dollars, the problem's going to solve itself in five years. It's not that bigger problem anyhow as it stands. I mean, we can open a new cell for 1.2 million dollars, can't we?
We can, but that would just produce more N-MOC gas. But I'm not trying to be flippant about it, but-
Well, that's an ongoing expense, yeah.
Our engineering group has tried repeatedly to stress this with DEQ, that we see our gas levels going down to the point where we won't have gas. The rule says you have to have it in place by November 15th of 2021, or you fall out of compliance with EPA and DEQ regulations.
Mr. Tate, what are the fines? If we didn't do that, what would the fines be?
We can do a lot of $15,000 fines instead of 1.2 million dollars.
I think the max is $15,000 a day till it's corrected.
A day, okay.
A day.
Is that a DEQ fine or an EPA fine? Are these rules DEQ or EPA?
I think it's DEQ. They follow the EPA regulations.
All right, Commissioner Travis?
How do they test the gas?
We, Labella Engineering tests it for us every year. Now, how they do it, Commissioner Travis, I do not know.
My question is, you're saying they'll start fining us in November, so why wouldn't we want to have the landfill retested in October? And if it's still in that limit, then think about money.
The prediction is it won't be down enough to get you below the threshold.
I mean, it's a prediction. You don't know.
They're pretty good at this, I think. So I don't think you'll be below it.
I'd much rather wait till last minute, spend 1.2 million dollars to know for sure instead of just do it on a whim.
I don't think we're doing it on a whim. I mean, we're doing it based on our engineers' recommendations, so, and they do this at a lot of different landfills, so.
Kind of like Commissioner Richardson, 44 milligrams ain't nothing.
I agree, but it is the federal regulation.
Okay. Very good. Any further questions? Further comment? Do we have a motion?
Well, I'm going to make the motion. I'm going to make the motion to approve the request, but I'm also going to caveat, I want to know what the 44 milligrams is. That tells me nothing.
I can get you that information.
Well, I appreciate it. And I would like, as I make this motion, for the world to know that this is an indication of trust in you and your department engineers, because we don't, I don't understand the technicalities thereof.
I don't either.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, gentlemen. And I apologize for having to bring that to you.
Real quick, Mr. Chairman, did the motion cover all three things that he needs?
Yeah, the request of approval of Advance One Development, as I understand it, as it written, is that-
As I understood it, it was all the things under item A.
Well, he added one thing, right?
Well, the request for the change orders by the manager and to approve the budget amendment submitted by finance.
Yeah, he said budget amendment, change orders with the county manager, and the approval of the 1.2 million dollars.
Is that good?
It's good by me.
Good by me.
Very good. You got it? Very good.
Just clarification.
No, thank you. I appreciate it, Commissioner. All right, item B.
Okay. The second item is a consideration of options for litter control inside the county. And in your packet, I submitted, I think, nine potential options for litter control inside the county. I submitted these as starters or thought starters for how the board would like to address the litter problem that we have. When the Solid Waste Committee met at their last meeting, they recommended option number four of the nine. Since that meeting, I've added five more as they have come up, and we've done some further investigations. So I'm open to answer any questions or whatever the board would consider for the changes to the county litter program, how you want to move forward with that.
Well, let's go over the one that you guys are recommending. Let's hear that first.
Okay, so I think that is option number-
Hang on one second, Ronnie. Commissioner Pertle?
Did I understand you to say that since the committee met, you've added five more options?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So there's five of these nine, the Solid Waste Committee has not discussed.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Make sure that's correct.
Now, nine is probably a very close hybrid of number four. It's not, it's really not very different from that, I don't think. So, but number nine is, let me see, we would, the county would hire a part-time litter collection supervisor. This person would be over part-time employees, probably four to eight, working approximately 19 hours a week. And they would be dispatched to areas to pick up litter as we receive those requests. You see in there that we have the payments also for nonprofits. Nonprofits could request to be included in the pickup with a minimum of two miles required to be part of the program, and they would be reimbursed up to $75 per mile. And as you can see, the other items that's submitted, expenses for vehicles, supplies, the IT components of the program for phone, computer. Now, we did find out on the last page of this, working with Derek in IT, we've looked at an app that would allow citizens to load onto their mobile device. If they see litter on the side of the road, drop a pin where that is on the mobile device. It would come back to the county. We would respond back and go out and pick it up. That cost is approximately $15,000 per year for that app. We saw, staff saw an app like this in Greenville County, South Carolina, where they were using it, and that's where we, that's where the app comes in for this, if the board would like to have something like that.
We could potentially do that internally. I talked to Derek and Paul, and our Cognos guy could potentially do that internally.
Okay, all right, I was not aware of that, sir. Okay.
Good. That's good. I like it.
Gentlemen, do we have any questions? Mr. Berger?
So, I mean, you've kind of mentioned to the public that the Solid Waste Committee recommended option four, and then you mentioned that option nine is similar and gave a little bit about option nine. So what is it for the general public that the Solid Waste Committee is recommending?
Okay, so let me-
I can read it, but they don't see it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll read it. So option four was to have the county take control of the litter program- So option four was to have the county take control of the litter program and hire a full-time litter control supervisor and up to 10 part-time employees to collect litters. The supervisor would be in charge of transportation of the part-time employees to and from to collect, to collection areas and scheduling adequate staff to collect litter. This action would require that the county slash sheriff's department absorb the calls to the two deputies that are in the inmate litter program now. Note, this option would add 30,000 to the current program budget. It looks like the cost would be approximately $162,000 to the county with option four.
And so your, your committee, I mean, was that a, that was the unanimous decision or was that?
It was. And as, as option nine stands now, if you do not include the app, the budget for it's 101,302 dollars.
Commissioner Travis, you have a question?
Yeah, my understanding, I, I understand the solid waste committee did option four, but I think you, you added these different options based on recommendations from some commissioners and their thoughts and talking to staff. So I, I understand where that came from. But my question is, the, I guess, the, the budget for option nine is really not set in stone, because if I understand correctly, we're, we're going into a new field. So we don't know really how well the nonprofits will do. We don't have, know how well four to eight part-timers will do. We don't, we don't even know if, if the supervisor's going to be full-time or part-time, because you don't really know. So this is just a filler to, to get, get you started, right?
It, it is now, the, as it's stated here, it is a part-time position for the supervisor. But I, I don't know if it got to be where it was very successful, the board might want to consider making it full-time. I don't know. Until we, if, if the board decides to start a program, we don't know. We're just basing this off of some assumptions.
Yeah, I, just to tell the board, I was recommending at the solid waste board that it be a full-time position due to all the nonprofits that have been reaching out, I don't know to me, I don't know if they reached out to, to y'all about this, but it was a big, I guess, inquiry about it from places like Genesis Ministry and, and churches that are wanting to get out there to make a little money for like their youth program. They can go pick up two or three miles, and that's 200 some dollars right there for them to pick up. Only thing I was worried about is, and I haven't heard this, if you get a nonprofit or you require them to do a certain time a month or a quarter, how, how much do they have to pick up?
Uh, let's see.
You said a minimum of two miles, I believe.
Yeah, two miles. And I, I think the way I've got it here, it would be once per month.
Once per month, okay.
Now, of course, if the board wants it more or less, we can do that too as well.
You pretty much could give someone two miles, 150 dollars every month if they go out there and pick out.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That sounds good.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, I just want to say that we, we talked about this in depth, that Ronnie, Paul and I talked about it and ran several different scenarios. Now, this is going to be a, a work in progress. It's not going to be the, the fix-all at the very beginning. I mean, like you said, it may be a part-time supervisor recommend, it could go to, who knows? It's, it's going to be very fluid for the first year or two. We might not get anybody to pick up trash for $9 an hour. It might have to go to $10 an hour. So we might not get any takers for the 75, what is it, $75 a mile? It's just going to be very fluid. We're going to test the, the, the program out.
Yeah. One last question, Ronnie. What's your plans if you want to reach out to some of these nonprofits? How are you going to reach out to let them know that the county has this program going on?
Uh, hadn't thought that far yet, Commissioner Travis, but I would probably just try to personally call the ones that I could and try to get it out on our social media sites through Mable, whatever, whatever means to, to generate interest for it, whatever we need to do from staff, so.
Thank you, Ronnie. I know you've been working on it for a while, so I appreciate your hard work on it.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. Tate, so have you touched base or Commissioner Travis, you, do we know if some of these organizations are interested in doing this? Do we have confirmation of that?
I, now, I think Commissioner Travis has had several call him expressing interest in it. I have not had any call me personally yet, but I think he's, they've reached out to him. So.
Okay, yeah, Commissioner Pertle?
So essentially, we're going to start paying folks to adopt a highway.
Yeah, sort of, kinda, yeah.
And one of these scenarios, did we look at or did we consider, was contracting this out?
Uh, we have looked at that in the past, but the cost per mile is extremely expensive. I mean, it's thousands of dollars per mile.
How long has it been since you looked at it? Because I had a conversation with someone today, and I believe that's what the state of North Carolina is doing now.
It, they are. Yes, sir, that is correct. That's what the state does, yes. It's, it's been a while, Commissioner Pertle. I can't remember when, but it was, it was a while back.
Commissioner Berger?
Well, just about every business I pass by has a help wanted sign. So, I mean, saying that we're going to find these part-time folks seems to be, for $9 an hour, $10 an hour, seems to be a far-fetched. You know, we, we're entering a phase where the state is starting to relax their standards. I'm not so sure that we wouldn't be better off hanging tight for a while. I'd like to hear from the sheriff.
This evening?
I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Mr. Berger? Yes, sir, Sheriff, thanks. So I've heard from Commissioner Travis, one of the issues is the inmate litter program and that, due to restrictions from the governor, has been unable to proceed for the time being. With relaxed standards, is that something that y'all would be able to pick back up?
I'm, I'm, I think my recommendation, if I can go back to that, was to just basically put it to sleep for six months. And then, because right now, the uncertainty with the COVID and the restrictions, we depended on a lot on our inmate, misdemeanor confinement program, where we're taking inmates from other counties and work and drawing from that pool. But with the COVID situation for the past year, we've been downing that, put us in a deficit. I'm not saying I wouldn't be interested in doing that, and I'm going to listen to the conversation. But, you know, again, like I said, I, I would entertain coming back and talking with you, talking with Ronnie and the commissioners.
Okay.
Okay, but just right now, is with the COVID issue and stuff and restrictions, we just don't have the pool to draw from. And, and of course, you're dealing also with the funds from the landfill and stuff like this, where their funds are spent.
Right. Plus, didn't you say there were two, Sheriff, didn't you say there were two jails that recently opened that, that took a lot of our misdemeanor confinements?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
They were not eligible anyway, were they?
Well, well, persons of misdemeanor, well, a person that's a misdemeanor confinement person assigned to our jail, if they meet certain criteria, we, we could potentially work them if we had the personnel. Right now, there's not a lot of prisoner transfer still. And what are, they, they may go into some bigger jails, but we just haven't received anybody pretty much since we got into the COVID situation.
Yeah, Commissioner Travis?
Sheriff, for, real quick, when your representatives came to the solid waste committee, they implied that it was getting harder and harder for you to find recruitments for people to go out to do litter program. They implied, due to these two prisons being open, y'all are not getting as many inmate confinement misdemeanors, misdemeanor confinements as you previously did. And they projected that in the next coming month, it'd probably be less.
I, I don't have it down in front of me, so I can't speak to what they told you. All I can tell you is that with the COVID restrictions, that put it, put a disconnect on the transfer prisoners under misdemeanor confinement program. If you had that pool to, if you had that pool to grab from in the jail, then you got potential workers. But if you don't have it, you don't have it.
I mean, me personally, I'm, I'm, I'm good with re, readdressing this in six months. I'm, I'm fine with that. Hopefully, your inmates, you know, we can get that going again, because that's the ultimate goal. But.
Right.
It don't do nothing to pick up trash now. It don't do nothing next month, and the month after that, when citizens keep calling me complaining about roads being dirty.
Well, I, I am aware, if I may, may add, I am aware that the state does contract with some of their personnel, they're out doing pickups right now. I also, you know, where that we are doing our own trash initiatives with our citizens and stuff like this, because a lot of it is, is all of us participating, help to keep Rockingham County clean. Okay? And it's an education process, so, you know, it's, it's a collective. But, but as far as the inmate cleanup program, until I get some persons in, in the jail that I can draw from, it's hard for me to go out.
This, this will have an impact on the budget process. I'm trying to strategize with the sheriff on the, the budget and the needs, so if you use those two, yeah, it'll.
Puts us back, we probably need to have some follow-up conversation. Mr. Messler?
Yep.
Mr. Commissioners, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Commissioner Richardson?
So we're, we're going to be looking, this is actually for you, Ronnie. Sheriff, I appreciate it. You and I have had some ongoing conversation. I appreciate you keeping me in the loop. But Ronnie, are you going to be recommending option nine or option four? Tell, tell us what you're going to be recommending, and whatever it is, I think the agreement is, is this is a starting point, and there will be a continual update, revamp.
Well, I'd like to see us look at something different.
Well, here, here's the question. I, I probably would too, but I don't know exactly what to tell you. And I certainly don't know how to quantify it as one being better than the other.
Mr. Pertle, you have a question?
Yeah, and this is just my.
Keep my five or nine in mind.
These are my thoughts when I was reading through the, the materials. One was the, obviously contracted services, when we'd last looked at that. But secondly, after conversations, I, I too think you'll, I see those same help wanted signs all over Rockingham County, and I think you're just going to struggle at the rate that we can afford to pay, especially in today's climate. However, there's one thing that's down here that doesn't give me, that, that I think is probably a good thing. And it may be something that we can look at sooner than later, and that's the, the nonprofit picking up some debris on the side of the road for certain areas. I certainly, you know, that would be something that I, I think we should consider that really doesn't weigh so, so heavily on the, the labor concerns that I think all of us have. But if, if you've got nonprofits that are interested, to me, that's a, you know, that's, that's a good thing, because they can leave the bags on the side of the road, and the state will come by and pick them up. And all we've, we've cleaned up a mile for, what was it, $75 a mile or something like that? So that's just a, that's just my thought, because you got two sides of the road in that mile, right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure. And when we want, yeah. That's what I, that's my comments, Mr. Chair.
I, I particularly like that option, because it involves more people and it actually gets some money that's going to be recirculated through the charitable organizations soon. You didn't answer my four or nine. What do you guys recommend?
I, I'm not making a recommendation. It's, I presented the options for the board to consider.
Well, personally, I mean, I, I agree with the nonprofits. I also like the option of a contracted service, at least getting that information, and then revisiting the, the issue with the sheriff after six months or so. That's what I'd like, but one of the disturbing things is, we've got nine options, the committee saw four, and then we don't even have a recommendation. So.
The committee recommended option four.
Well, doesn't that committee meet this week?
Tomorrow, Wednesday.
If we have a quorum.
And if we want to entertain a motion to, to send this back to the committee, to let them hammer out a recommendation.
Mr. Chair, is there, is there an interest of the, of this board to, to move forward with at least, with at least the, the nonprofit component to this? Is that something that is an interest that we could do? Regardless if we move on this, after y'all's next meeting, or revisit it in six months with the sheriff, to me, that's one component of what's been presented in this.
You'll have to have a.
I get, I get the feeling it would be for that component piece. Here's, here's what I see out of that, and it, it would be, we could give the instruction about the nonprofit piece, because whether the inmate litter program is, is there or not, that may be something we want to continue. But beyond giving that instruction, we've got no concept of how it would operate as far as if it's the nonprofit piece, who's overseeing it? Because if we don't, we've got to assign that, which we'd leave that to Lance, to somebody.
Yep.
So we could give that instruction, and whether we'd have to revisit that issue or just leave it for management to determine, I think that'd be something up to the board.
Yes, sir. And this, I guess, would be for Ronnie or the county manager. Who oversees the adopt a highway program in a county now?
State, buddy.
County has nothing to do with it.
We had the stretch out there, that's it.
Besides picking up a, I mean, we don't, we don't give them supplies, nothing.
They, they give us supplies.
I know, they give y'all supplies, but we don't distribute them out to the, if somebody wanted to pick up trash on the side of the road, they wouldn't come here and get some. They'd go to the state to get the orange bags, the gloves and everything.
If they're part of adopt the highway, I don't know if, if they're, if they are not part of adopt the highway, I don't know if the state gives it out to them or not. I think it's just for adopt the highway. And I may be wrong, but I, I think that's the way you get the bags and things.
That's something else to check on. It's my understanding that if there's an orange bag on the side of the road with garbage in it, the state will pick it up. I hope they would pick it up, or somebody would pick it up.
Race management or something.
Well, I mean, I would think the state would. I'm just saying that we, if, if we, we move forward with some type of nonprofit compensating them for picking up garbage, we ought to have a mechanism in place where we give them the bags and the, and the gloves and to, to do it, but.
Now, we would do that.
Yeah, that, that was part of the proposal. That's listed under supplies for option nine.
We'll come pick those orange bags up if we tell them where the roads are.
Commissioner Travis?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good, I'm good with that, Ronnie, and what the commissioners are suggesting. Hire a part-time supervisor, oversee the nonprofit organization to, to schedule it and reach out to them, and then take what are remaining options back to the waste man, solid waste committee, give them the options and let them come back. And, but in the meantime, I'm all in favor of reaching out to these nonprofits, see if we can at least get some feats on the ground, picking up some trash.
Well. Yeah, when I, when I was thinking of getting nonprofits, I wasn't necessarily thinking of hiring somebody to oversee it.
Somebody's got to organize it.
Well, to me, well, I don't know. You come back.
I think they have time.
Well, I didn't say Ronnie did have time. I didn't mention any names. I didn't mention any names. But the fact of the matter is, is that you feel like, well, I don't know, but I feel like that most of these organizations, these nonprofits that we're talking about, is probably going to pick up the trash in their immediate area where they at, where their church is located at, or where they meet at. And I, I think that there's a reasonable, there's some reason about it, that if they put up the, the sign, and that's their, they're adopting that highway, they'd pick up the trash and would get compensated for it when they pick up the trash, because their orange bags will be there. But you can work out the logistics on that. But anyway, I didn't, I didn't, in my conversation, I did not include at this point hiring somebody to oversee that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's what I was getting at as well, so.
Do we want to, do we want to fry it? Well, Commissioner Richardson?
Well, I'd like to see us do something tonight, not wait, you know, whether it's, whether it's initiate or review or something, but we need to put a program in order, because the litter is, is falling every day. And I particularly like, and I think everybody here likes the community service aspect, the charitable giving and so forth, because it involves the citizenry and cleaning up.
So do we want to direct the county manager to develop this program or look into developing that program?
Well, I think we need to recognize that somebody under his prevalence is going to have to administer it.
Right.
In some ways, and I'm, and I'm not telling you how to do it. You get paid something for that, I think. But if we can put something in, in order to at least make a start, and at least with the one that Commissioner Pertle was talking about, we, we all agreed, I think. one that Commissioner Pertle was talking about, we all agreed, I think it is going to be a very attractive option. I agree with Mr. Berger that it's going to be hard to get somebody out there at $9 an hour if we try to finance it. The essence is, we need to encourage our citizens not to put trash out, provide folks a way to clean up for themselves. You know, I'd hate to see us legislate that property owners would have to keep whatever road frontage there. This, I'd really like to see it to be a voluntary sort of thing. So I'm happy with several of the suggestions, but I think we ought to do something tonight and leave the implementation to Lance or whoever you choose within your organization.
Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson?
Chair is very willing to entertain a motion, if someone likes to make a motion.
I'd make a motion that we direct the manager to look at the logistics of starting a program with nonprofits being compensated up to $75 a mile for both sides of the road. And it just brings something forward to us with how that would operate, and using existing staff, and then if there's a need for, bring that to us too. But I can't help but think that we should start with trying to use existing staff and then see if it migrates to articulate any additional staff needed.
So the direction would be for me to set up the logistics, take care of that internally if we can, but we can go ahead and proceed. We don't have to bring anything back for the board to approve for this particular part for nonprofits, correct?
So your motion?
We can get started on that tomorrow.
All right, is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Clerk, do you have that motion down? Okay, very good.
Let you go.
All righty, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Tate.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Appreciate you being here tonight. No. Very good. That takes us to item 11, new business. Mr. Manager, is there any new business?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Commissioner comments and Commissioner Travis?
No comment.
Very good. Commissioner Richardson, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I want to make the same pitch for, to encourage all our citizens to get behind the Rocket Top program, tell the youth in your family, in your neighborhood, that there are opportunities out there for excellent careers. All these young people need to do is talk with their school counselor. They should have everything. Plus, there are multiple opportunities for training for older individuals within the county, particularly with Goodwill and several others. And I'd like to encourage the public in general to get their COVID vaccination. If you don't think you need it, maybe. However, do it for your neighbor, if not for yourself. And I'm going to ask a question, put you on the spot, Lance. I understand the location, the venue is changing for getting your COVID shots through the county.
Yes, last day at the community college, May 7th. We're going to start having it back over here at the public health department, just like you would a flu shot.
Yeah, and I assume that that's on the website?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So go get your shots. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Pertle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier tonight, Melissa Farrell got up and talked to us about the MOU with Cardinal Innovations and how that's going to impact children in foster care, and the much-needed therapeutic component to that. And she talked about the dedicated workers that she has that provide, for lack of a better word, oversight on these cases. And I know they've been overworked, and it's a thankless job, and I just want her to know that I think this board recognizes that, and we appreciate everything that you and all your staff do every day, and thank you very much. That's all that happens, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Berger?
Want to thank y'all for coming out tonight. Special recognition to Tony Reese and Bonnie Purgason, members of the Board of Elections. Also, Sheriff Page, certainly appreciate you being here tonight, and our department heads. And yes, we do recognize the hard work and the stress that Ms. Farrell has been under due to COVID, and many people in her department, and then the foster situation, and just a lot of things that the Department of Social Services deals with. So thank you for everything that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berger. Thank you, everyone, for attending and for watching. I'd like to express our appreciation from the board for Commissioner Pertle serving on the 555 Committee, and you'll hear more about that in the future, but there was a lot of great things in the works for the county. So we appreciate that. Thank you, again, thank you, everyone. Our next meeting is May 17th, 6:30, right here. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Get out of here. Out of here.